All right, welcome to the Lake Bluff School District sixty-five Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. I'd like to call this meeting's order at seven oh four P M. Carrie, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Andy Duran.
Present.
Anne Hill.
Present.
Mark Berry.
Present.
Carrie Simek, present, Tim Pennich.
Present.
Lauren Hirsch, present.
Amy Connell, down too, not present.
But we do have a forum, so we can begin. Would you please join me and stand for the ledge.
President of the United States of America. To the Republic of the States. One nation under God. In the soul of liberty and justice for all.
All right, and would anyone like to volunteer tonight to read the mission, vision, and values for Lake Bluff Schools at sixty-five?
I can do it if you give it to me.
Okay.
District sixty-five mission statement, to provide each student with quality instruction, learning opportunities, and educational environments that inspire academic achievement, personal growth, and responsible citizenship. Our vision statement is excellence in education, enthusiasm for life, every student, every day.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the public comment period. At every Board of Ed meeting, we offer the opportunity for members of the public to address the board, so if anyone would like to speak tonight, can identify yourself at this table. Not seeing anybody present, and I assume nobody virtually either, Amy?
Nobody.
Okay. Then we'll move on. Item six is the addition of a discussion item. At each board meeting, we offer the opportunity for board members to suggest a discussion item for future agendas. Does anyone have anything to suggest this evening? Hasn't already been suggested, nope. Okay. We'll move on to reports, super simple tonight, since this was originally a committee of the whole meeting. The only reports are mine and Dr. Lee Alley's. Mine is super fast. Number one, if you're watching at home, just please think about completing the strategic planning survey that our school administrators sent out earlier in the week. That data is very valuable as we go through the planning process. Want to highlight, obviously, the middle school Aladdin show this weekend. And next week, just as big of an event is the community coffee, meet the superintendent, April eighteenth at the Admin Center. Does that still happen?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, then singing and dancing at that one?
No, no, singing and dancing, although you never know. No, that is the one we put on in partnership with Lead Be Smart and is it three, and the Lake Bluff Police Department. So we are working as a group to put together some of the information that parents had asked for on the survey that we sent out this fall around mental health, supporting your students with mental health, supporting your students with talking about gun safety or safe gun storage, and then internet and online safety as well. The internet online safety portion is going to be addressed in a different session with Jesse Weinberger. But this one is going to be focused on, again, mental health and safe gun storage, and talking to your kids or your kids' friends, parents about guns and safe gun storage.
Awesome.
And that's the eighteenth.
That is the eighteenth, yep, at six thirty, I believe.
LVES, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, great. Finally, just want to congratulate Laura Breakstone for being elected to Board of Ed along with Anne and I for a second term, so happy to have you joining us, Laura. And we'll have time to do this next meeting, but we'll miss you, Mark, as you, I think, down to your. Penultimate meeting, right?
Oh, it's the penultimate.
Penultimate meeting, I think, right?
I love that term.
Sounds fancy.
Yes.
One more.
Gonna brand that.
Second, it's like the almost last, yeah.
Yeah. All right, and that's it for me, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Lee Alley.
I really don't have much to report tonight. My main report would be on the strategic plan, and that's a discussion item for us tonight, so if there's anything else, we can just move on.
Let's get to it, then. So first discussion presentation is your strategic plan update.
Okay, can you let me share my screen, Amy, and then I'll?
Oh, yes.
Do we have to do the field trips first?
Yeah.
Oh, field trips first, is that on the agenda first?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, reversed them, yeah, thank you, yep.
We really want to hear about field trips first.
Mr. Blackmore, we'll have you come up first, thank you.
Thank you, happy to talk about Lake Bluff Middle School field trips. The information that I submitted to you was for each of the trips. At sixth grade, it's a day trip to Springfield. Seventh grade, it's early in the year in October, the three-day Lake Bluff outdoor ed experience. Students experience one overnight at East Troy, Wisconsin, Camp Edwards. So we break the grade level in half. One group is doing outdoor ed while the other group is doing Lake Bluff ed. We switch in the middle, and then both groups get to have the same experience. And then, of course, the February Washington DC trip that happens in eighth grade. Feels like that was just yesterday, but it wasn't. It wasn't. But it was a successful trip nonetheless. We did get home late due to a snowstorm here in the Chicago area, but all in all, it was a great trip. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about any one of those three. I continue to consider us very lucky to have staff that are committed and willing to give up time to chaperone these events and give our students an opportunity to have some educational experiences outside of the classroom. It's always one of those things that they reflect on and talk fondly about, so.
Any questions?
And again, the approval for this isn't about the field trip, because we don't bring all of our field trips to you for approval, but this is about the distance that we have students traveling away from the district, which isn't our board policy, so we're approving that portion of the trip. But it's nice to know the whole package.
Any questions for Nate? All right.
Thank you.
Now, your turn.
Great, so I'm going to share my screen. Oh, I still can't do it. So what we're doing tonight is talking, it's a sort of a continuation from the two special board meetings that we've had in the last month to go over our strategic planning process and the products that have come out of that process. So as you know, Crystal Conley from C E C has joined us to go through the process that we've taken to get to the point that we are at. And I think that's been beneficial to bring the board up to speed on just what's happened in those meetings. But I understand, and it's unfortunate, we haven't had a whole lot of time for board discussion when we look at the products coming out of each of those sessions. So what we're doing tonight is taking a look at each of those products and talking as a leadership team, you know, especially now that we're kind of moving into the final stages of the process. What kinds of things are resonating with you from the work of the team and what things are feeling like? This really should not be something in our final, final plan. So out of that first meeting, as you might remember, the big product that we surveyed the staff on was our SWOT analysis, and SWOT stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We developed the draft SWOT after looking at about three hours of data. So Jay, Margaret, Tracy, and I all presented data on finance and tech, student achievement and growth, as well as culture and climate data from students and staff and our thrive data. So any sort of, it was called an environmental scan. We looked at all the data that we collect, the most recent version of it, and each table and each group had a chance to just kind of pour through the data and look at all of the trends that we saw and where they think they belong in each of these boxes. So strengths, again, are things that we are working on and doing well. Weaknesses are things that we're working on and not doing as well as we could be. Opportunities are things that we really haven't started working on but could be beneficial to us if we started working on them. And threats are really the things that we might not have too much control over but would impact how we're doing as a district and how our students are doing. So after that first retreat, we, as you know, surveyed the community, and we got about three hundred and thirty-three responses. We talked a little bit about disaggregating that data, those data pieces, which we will do in this next round. But we took those data and adjusted our SWOT, and really, like we talked about, there wasn't too much that changed in terms of moving boxes, but things got more detailed and specific. So we did talk about communication was in a big bucket in the weaknesses area, and after looking at the feedback, it really came back that it was not quite just the whole big bucket of communication, but that there were some pieces of communication that we needed to get better with. So we tried to clarify that based on the feedback. But again, here's the final draft as we have it now, and nothing is really final until we send out that final, final product to the community for more feedback. So if there's anything on here that we feel like, I guess my two big questions would be, is there anything in these boxes that you feel like are in the wrong place? Or is there anything, are there any pieces in this that you feel haven't been represented? Is there anything that you feel like should be on the chart that isn't on the chart and hasn't been represented? Mark?
Space allocation constraints is in two places.
Yes, that's true. Yes.
It was enrichment.
Yeah, so space allocation and constraints, there was a, there's a concern that maybe we have some storage issues, or, you know, we've built these two, we have these beautiful facilities, and in classrooms, we are definitely coming up short in the teacher's storage or maybe student's storage part, or just where we can put things in the classrooms, but also then where people can go in the building. So as you know, our staffing plan includes more adults at the elementary school in particular, and so we're running out of space in some cases for small groups or for additional classrooms. And so that is, if we're not going to do anything with our facilities at this point in terms of big projects, it feels like a weakness, right? Because there's some things that we maybe are struggling with. But then it's also in threats, because in order to do something really big about it, you know, in terms of like relooking at our facilities, that's not something that we've really talked about or been interested in doing. It's not in the plan. So the team didn't feel like it could really go in weaknesses because they weren't sure that that was a big project that we would want to or need to tackle, because our population is kind of up and down. We're seeing those bubbles. But we also feel like there are some solutions that we can put in place with like the furniture order, when we upgrade or up upgrade furniture, things, fixtures that we have in the buildings that we might be able to address more of the particular needs of the classrooms that maybe weren't addressed in the construction plan.
The thing that jumps out to me is in threats is that when I look at the other thing in threat, the other items in threats, they seem more, much more significant and impactful on kids that we have very little control over.
Yes.
The, the space allocation, we're not going to do another referendum, we're not going to add it unless.
Not in the near future, yeah.
Unless some huge development comes in and we get five hundred kids moving in, maybe something changes, but.
It did come up, like the Stonebridge development has been on.
But that's been on the radar for fifteen years.
Forever, so, right.
And so I kind of think that maybe it doesn't belong in threats, and perhaps it belongs in weaknesses, because if there's a way to get incredibly creative, maybe we can
Consider some of those.
Do something better with that.
Okay.
I agree with that, actually, Mark.
Amy, you're taking notes, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can you remind me, because you said in the beginning, but I need it twice, weaknesses versus opportunities?
Yeah, so weaknesses are things that we actually try to address or have tried to address, and we're not doing that well at it. So we've like made plans or have done some initiatives to address whatever's in that box, but it doesn't seem to be going that well. We've made efforts, and we're not seeing the gains. Opportunities is like, we haven't even started really, people don't feel like we've started really addressing it in a systematic way, but if we did make a plan, that's an opportunity for improvement. So there's like, I guess, a more hopeful connotation with opportunities, because weaknesses feels like something we're just not doing very well right now.
But it's still an opportunity to grow on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, both of those boxes, those two boxes are really where our goal areas are going to come from.
That's what I remember. Okay, so I guess my opinion then is, I mean, we just had a policy meeting on behavior interventions. I would, I would like to, I didn't see much data in the packet about falling short there. So I'm curious why that would be a weakness. It just, because there's not very, I don't know.
I think that one came more from perception data, from staff and parents, perception data in the Thrive Survey, the HumanX Survey, Five Essentials came out a little bit of like management, behavior management. And if you remember, on the first SWOT analysis, it was behavior management, and the team felt really uncomfortable with that wording. We felt like it was more about when a student is demonstrating that they're having, they're struggling with a behavior or manifestation of some kind of something that they're struggling with in school. It's after what we've taught that there aren't maybe some additional interventions, systematic interventions that we could utilize for individual students and make a difference in those behaviors. And again, just because it's in the weakness part, that's the perception right now, which is the reality probably for some people, but maybe not for all people. So again, anything in these boxes are trends. They're trends based on our data, and then the team has to just kind of sift through that and see where they think it's appropriate, but again, this is what we're here for, too.
When we did the last Zoom about this, Amy was asking a question exactly about this, and she couldn't quite put her finger on the language.
Yeah.
But I kind of get it.
It feels too personal to see it that way.
It kind of depends on who's impacted by it, who's observed it, and it's often a small subset of the population that has really been affected directly by that. And so you said it's also, you use the word perception, so I think you have to build your plans for improvement around not only improving the way we do interventions, but also how we
Communicate.
Communicate them and how we help people perceive them.
Yeah, and I think that's really, I mean, I'm not surprised to see it up there. I mean, this is why we had the Behavior Policy Committee meeting. I mean, we've definitely.
Explosive little point, anyways.
I mean, we've heard that people are feeling like this is a big issue, not just because of their own child, but more because of what their children are experiencing in school or in other places. We're not alone in that. And some of the threats, quite frankly, are not helping with some of those things.
Right.
But I think, and in terms of an area of improvement, I mean, let's be honest, if it's the perception, then that's the reality for some folks, and so we need to get better. To your point of maybe doing better and communicating better, or just maybe communicating in a different way, because with behavior, you're right, it is personal, and there isn't a lot that we can share on individual behavior intervention. So there's confidentiality around it, but there could be some work to look at our communication systems or what we can share. That's in the action planning point.
I like your point about how all of these listed in boxes are just really, but particularly weaknesses and opportunities are opportunities for goals, right, to set goals around those things. And so I understand what you're saying, Carrie. I don't think that, you know, I think that having an opportunity to set a goal around behavior, management intervention, whatever we end up calling it, is important.
Yeah, makes sense.
And I almost see it as consistent, like maybe it fits more in opportunities, but how, because to me, I mean, my perception is that it's not across the board, all grade levels, that we're having these, you know, behavior interventions, weakness of behavior interventions. So maybe it belongs more in opportunities and is a consistent, you know, it's all about being consistent across the grades.
You mean vertically?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. That's a good point to bring to the team.
Yeah, that is a good point. Just as a, because maybe there are some grades that are doing, you know, have it more under control, not under control, but.
More consistent approach?
Yeah.
Or figured it out.
I mean, and the other thing that's nice about this is that this is for a three-to-five-year plan, so we would love in three or four years when we come back for this to be moved to a different box. And yeah, I think the more specific we can get, which I think that's a great point to bring to the team, the more specific or actionable we can create a goal that's actionable, you know, something that we can address.
And it might even hit the enrichment portion, too.
Yeah.
Because like, I mean, I see enrichment in my fourth grader, you know, in her math and that type of thing, which, you know, I think that maybe some other grades were not, it is a weakness. So again, it's that consistency.
Differentiation is really built into the fourth and fifth grade a lot more than the other grades.
So you're thinking consistent implementation.
Yeah, move it more of an opportunity than a weakness.
I see, I see that we don't mention, I see it says internal communication, but not just communication in general.
That was going to be my point as well, is I think internal miscommunication is mis, I don't think it is, those words are representing what that's supposed to represent.
Yeah.
I agree.
I would agree with you, and it was something I was going to bring to the team, because at my table, and I can only speak for the table that I sat at this last retreat, we pinpointed communication down to specific feedback to parents from teachers on student performance. So internal communication to me looks like staff or administrator to staff.
Right.
And I don't think that that is, that's not what I heard from my table, and I don't think I heard it on the poster. So that was definitely something that I was going to bring up myself.
I think Crystal brought it up, too.
Yeah.
You said, she said the same thing that you did, so you should probably.
But I think it applies to a lot of different things, like the example about the behavioral interventions and how we communicate that.
I was really pleased, actually, that when communication, just as a broad, was on the weaknesses, we had a lot of people write in like, no, I think this district does a good job of communication, which is pretty great and pretty surprising, because that's typically a thing that people aren't feeling good about. But I have heard before that idea of student performance data, so that makes sense to me.
What was the other one that's in two boxes?
The enrichment.
Enrichment.
Enrichment and differentiation, right? And so it says enrichment opportunities under opportunities, and then it says enrichment is also a weakness. Yeah, and I think the reason, I can, I think I'm remembering correctly, the reason it was in the opportunities section was because of the audit next year. That there may be some things that we're going to be putting in place that we haven't tried yet that could address some of the issues that are coming up. But enrichment, as we've been doing it so far, at this point, feels a bit like a weakness. But we've addressed it, and for whatever reason, it's not feeling the same as it has. And so we did talk, people are aware that this is coming up for an audit, and that we should be open to new opportunities to try things differently in that area.
I was surprised to see the student and staff voice and input in opportunities, because I, I feel like, especially in like board meetings and then in other things, we really do reach out to the kids and the staff to give us like what's going on, or, you know, in the classroom, I feel like it's, I know you sit and talk and I'm not finishing my sentence, so sorry. So I'm surprised it's still an opportunity. I thought there would have honestly been a strength if it was presented to me, just because we see a lot of the students here and we see a lot of the staff supporting it.
I think you can have something that's actually a strength and an opportunity, though. You know, in times when I've gone through these experiences in other organizations, I think even something you're doing well could be an opportunity to do something better and differently and more, too, so I think.
Definitely, I guess I get worried about the scope of like the next five years, like how many opportunities we're going to try to have to implement strategically.
You got to prioritize.
Yeah, you're not wrong.
Yeah.
I think that's a great point to bring to the team, and I would agree. Again, at my table, that discussion, the staff members at my table also felt that staff voice was, there were lots of opportunities for staff voice. I think sometimes it's not whether you're given the opportunity, it's who takes advantage, or how consistently people take advantage of it, which is a different problem, but I think we can bring it back for discussion to get clear on that.
Just guaranteed curriculum.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
So, okay, so guaranteed and viable curriculum, we're going to be talking about a lot in the next few years, and that is basically the difference. We talked about this a long time ago, it may not even have been with this board, but the difference between having a plan that where we know for sure that the student outcomes that we've outlined for the year in every grade and every department are guaranteed for all students, right? And viable in the amount of time that we have. So the amount of curricular time that we are devoting to certain areas, that's a good enough amount of time to do what we're saying we're going to do, and that we're guaranteeing there are some outcomes that all students will move from grade to grade with. Eventually, we'll add the word transparent to that, guaranteed viable and transparent curriculum, because our parents are going to be wanting that kind of window into what the big skills are, what some of the core resources are, and so we're currently already working on this because it's a need. It's different from implementing a program. So right now, we have, say, Bridges as a program for math. That's not really a curriculum that can be guaranteed, because within any textbook, there's about two years' worth of material, so teachers have to make choices. There's differentiation in there, but there's also not necessarily something that's been scoped and sequenced out. We've made some things that are priorities, and that's available then to parents. So really, any program that you'll ever purchase is not going to be right for all students. It's a resource that's great, and we have tremendous resources in here. But as we're looking at the debate over the science of reading, or we're looking at how math is taught, or we're looking at how writing is taught, there isn't one program that's going to work for all students. What we need to do is take a look at what our priorities are based on what we want for students in the standards that we're accountable for, and make sure we map them out in a way that makes sense based on the amount of time that we have and the students that we have here, and make that available for all of our teachers to be working through with their professional learning communities and continue to revise. So it's a living document, it's something that should be based on standards and adjusted all the time. So it's basically the difference between going and looking at a content area every five years versus continually making it a review and revise and make sure that we're doing the right thing for kids.
So would that apply not only to math and reading, but like science and social studies, so that, yeah, because we don't do it in elementary every single semester?
Right, so it's all areas. The other thing that it helps with is communication, right? So that internal communication piece. If you just hand a teacher a textbook, and they, they're a new teacher, let's say, they might get some training on how to implement the textbook, but if there's no document kind of saying what we've decided is priority, or what things that we think are important here based on what our outcomes need to be, then that teacher is making a lot of decisions that might not be in line with the rest of the grade. And so this is also an internal communication piece as well as an external for parents. So it's going to take a while to build. Margaret and I have already been working on presenting kind of the end product to the board first, so you can see what it looks like in other districts when they have this available, and then talking about it backward, mapping that plan backwards to get teachers involved, writing that curriculum and being able to continue to revise it and make it transparent for parents. That part is non-negotiable at this point. Parents are interested to know.
I think that's huge. I mean, just everything you just said, it almost branches out to so many other goals.
Yeah, I agree.
If that's not in place, like how can you do like metrics and, yeah, team building and things like that?
And some of the work has been done here. They've done some prioritizing of standards, they've done some big ideas work, they've done a couple of units that they've, so there's been some work, but it hasn't been brought together and kind of organized. And some systems have come out recently that are really useful for that and helpful in building that blueprint. So we might as well take advantage of those tools and pull together the work that's been done over the last five, six years. We have new teachers that have come in that haven't been involved, so we're really working on a process for building and then continual revision and making available for parents. And also helps with common planning. So like our, our Student Services team doesn't always have common plan time with our grade level teachers. And so it's hard for them to get together and know what they're doing and collaborate on those things, but again, if we have that available in the system all organized, then people can know ahead of time and be able to support students better. So it hits a lot of things. And that work is starting this spring.
Great.
Anything else in there that feels off?
Can you give some background as to the change from materials, texts, and tech and resources being a strength, the just access to that, because it almost makes, seeing that change almost makes it seem like we're not providing.
That's a great question, and that was a big discussion, really related to what I was just talking about. So we do have access to a lot of resources. Not everyone believes that everyone has access to the highest quality resources or the most up-to-date resources. For example, we haven't really invested in social studies resources for a long time, and we haven't updated our science resources for a long time. Not all of the tech does everyone feel like is appropriate, and there was also something about parents at home don't necessarily feel like they have the resources to support their kids at home. So we felt like access to technology is a plus here. We have a lot of it, our kids have a lot of it, and you guys did a tremendous job making that change for COVID, for sure, and that will be here forever. But there are definitely some resources that we feel like we're not necessarily providing the highest quality that we could or the most aligned resources that should come under that guaranteed viable transparent curriculum.
I guess I have one last thing for me. So bullying is very, is like very specific. And just curious where that came out, just because it's a hot topic.
Well, and the fact that it's in opportunities, which we have now decided is something we haven't really addressed but can address. I mean, do you feel like bullying is something we haven't addressed at all? Not that there can't be improvement, but.
Right, no, of course, but it's so specific to like.
I might reach out to my colleagues here that are also on strategic, like, does that, it wasn't a topic at my table, so I'm not sure where that one came from. Was it at your table?
It was from a lot of the student surveys and from the students at my table.
Were not feeling like it had really been talked about.
That they, that they see it from other people happening. And, you know, what their perception of that is, they expressed that they felt like it was happening.
That's a really great perspective to take seriously.
I agree, and it would be nice to know, maybe if it's possible, not to single anybody out, what is more driven by the students, because I feel like that's a large voice to listen to. That would be kind of, and I think. That would be kind of, and I think it would be not quick fixes, but if we hear them and can do more for them, that would be huge.
That one, I mean, there's a few of them on here that will be tremendously helpful. To have students on the action committees that are working on planning for this. Yeah, like I said, our, our students on the team are really tremendous. And I don't think all the time talking from, like you said, personal experience. They were bringing the voices of other kids to the table, and that's really... I, I would agree with you. I don't think this is a district that's never done anything about bullying.
But if you hear now, like hearing that essentially from the kids, like I retract what I'm, was thinking.
Yes, change my perspective, too.
Completely, you know, put certain things in place, but if they're saying it, then there's...
And there might be things that kids know that are happening that we haven't addressed yet, because we don't even know what's happening.
Right.
So part of it is having, making sure that kids feel like they're in a safe environment to tell us what's happening and then addressing those things.
There's been initiatives, as long as I've been here, having to do with bullying. How effective they were, I don't know. It's, bullying is one of the most difficult things in society to get rid of, I would imagine. So there's no easy fix.
Yeah.
And some of it, I mean, I will say the conversation really went around how much of those threats that we don't have control over are causing some of the things that we do feel like we have a little bit more control over. But it's a vicious, right? It's like an inside-outside problem, so... You know, one thing that Crystal pointed out to us was it was pretty impressive that at all of our tables, when we looked at our data, every single table listed staff and students as a strength. And she's never seen that in the districts that she's worked with. And so I feel like with the strength of staff and students, we can address any of these issues that are coming out as weaknesses or opportunities. We, as long as we use our people, we're gonna be in good shape. Anything else on this part?
Can, can social media pressure, I'm sorry, last minute thought. Social media pressure and comparison, because bullying made me think of behavioral interventions, which made me look at threats from the outside and also social media pressure and comparison. So bullying is all over social media. Should we be, and I think I've mentioned this before or meeting at some point in my career over the years, should we be providing instruction to students about how to navigate social media effectively? In terms of behavior, behavior and response to behavior?
There's part of that that's in our tech curriculum. I know our librarians talk about media literacy and information literacy. I know in our health, in our health curriculum, but I think you're right. Maybe to strengthen that in the student and staff mental health, or add that piece as an opportunity.
Yeah, opportunity perhaps.
That's part of what we're bringing Jessie back to talk about is, because social media changes. Like generally speaking, pressure and comparison happen in that world, but how it happens changes so much, like so fast. And so parents have a hard time even keeping, I do, like have a hard time even keeping up.
Well, it's the same way. We're preparing kids for jobs that don't even exist in 20 years. You, you have to educate them and prepare them to deal with social media threats, for lack of a better word, that we can't anticipate just yet, that they're gonna be coming.
And just generally speaking, media, not even social media, there's regular media threats. Yeah. What's that? Can I take that class? Yeah, right, agreed. Stay off of it, is like my own, but it's hard to do that. It's hard to do that.
And we can't control that either, right?
All right, so we'll move us on to, so when we looked at our vision, right? We started looking at our vision, our mission, and each table had an idea of looking toward the future with some of the research they did on websites, other websites, other vision statements, other mission statements, and had some ideas that were put out. Again, we talked about building these portraits. The goal of the portrait, the portraits is to create a framework so that we can look at everything through a lens. So adult portrait is really about who are we hiring? How are we evaluating? What are our adults doing to make sure that we get our students the place we want them to be? The system portrait is what, how are we organizing our systems and processes and procedures to get what we're looking for in terms of outcomes? And then, of course, we had words and phrases that we liked, that we wanted included, to build these draft statements. So we'll go back and just take a look. Remember, our Portrait of a Learner has already been finished, and so we're looking now for adult portraits and system portraits that will help us get to those student outcomes. You know, the process behind this was very basic. It was voting. We all voted on our top ones, and the top themes came out of the group. So is there anything on this adult portrait that you feel like shouldn't be there? Or that you really feel like should be included, we feel strongly about? The ones in bold, again, are aligned to that Portrait of a Learner.
So I'm gonna make a point here that may show that I'm really ignorant, but maybe somebody else had this misperception as well in the labeling here. The adult portrait, I wasn't aware that this was just like employees. I was thinking community beyond.
So we can say that?
Well, I'm wondering if you wanna be more specific about what it is for.
I think I would like to have that conversation with the Strategic Planning Committee. You know, we talk a lot about a community support system, and you know, we're in this Community Wellness Task Force, we meet with the village all the time. Like, we're always talking about what we believe in our community. And I don't know how it would be received to just say, "This is what we ask of all of our adults that interact with our students."
I took it that way, because I was in Portrait of a Learner, and when we spoke about future, it was like how the learner will become an adult, how adults in the community will like...
Interact.
Yes, and so I took it like I was thinking as a community member and also as teachers and staff.
I mean, we can decide, and I think it's actually helpful to have sort of a guideline. You know, it's difficult sometimes to have conversations with adults that interact with the system in a way that is not helpful. And so if we, if we as a team feel like that is something that we would like to communicate, that this is what we are asking for from all of the adults, I think that that's, we can certainly do that. I think CEC typically does it as an employee portrait, because that's what we have control over, but that's something we can discuss.
You, you could phrase it in a way carefully, that, you know, employees will embrace, I'm spitballing, but will embrace these characteristics and role model them in all their interactions within the building and within the, you know, and to the community or before the community or something, as well as the board should probably bite into that as well.
Yeah, all of this will have to have lots of narrative around it. Remember, she showed that Vision 2030 piece that's kind of like, flushes out all these things. So we can absolutely discuss what we mean by it.
It's an interesting idea, about extending it beyond just employees and staff.
Anything in here that you feel like is not appropriate?
They're all good things.
They're all good things, yeah. Again, the system portrait is, as we're evaluating our systems, as we're evaluating how we make decisions, these would be the pieces that we would want to measure against. Are we, are we adhering to this, these pieces? I think this is very reflective, I think, of my experience of what people value, so...
So can you, it's kind of along the same lines as the prior question. Can you tell me in your mind what system portrait, who's that speaking to, or what is that speaking to?
So that, to me, is speaking to the administrative team and teams of teachers. So as you're making decisions about how to do things, are we meeting these criteria? So for example, if I'm looking at our multi-tiered system of supports for interventions for students, is that system that students are in by default, whenever we collect data and decide whether or not they need additional support, is that system respectful of students, families, and staff? So are we communicating with families? Are we keeping staff in the loop? Are students being judged on their data accurately and fairly? So like, we would want to evaluate systems by that. Do we invite the community into that somehow in the process? Do we have a clear purpose and direction for interventions and enrichment? Are we flexible? Are we adaptable? Are, you know, all of those things are what we would want our systems, processes, and procedures to reflect. Are we doing that with faculty meetings? Are we doing that when we have problem-solving meetings? Are we doing that when we decide on professional development? Or there's lots of decisions that we make or systems that we put in place that lead ultimately to who we are as a community? And I think ultimately, if all those little systems are measured against these things, then our bigger picture should result in that.
Well, I'm kind of not about precision. It's my own personal problem. But you might wanna define, you know, put language to what you just said, or something that the team can agree on.
I agree. It's an interesting idea, to be honest. I've never worked with a system portrait before. I like the idea.
Yeah.
And I think it's gonna take a little bit for us to integrate it into our practice, but I like it. I think it makes sense to me as a guidepost. Okay, so then we get to our draft, mission, vision, and mottos. So currently, we don't have a motto. We do have a mission and vision. The mission, remember, is the why we exist. The vision is what we're shooting for. So the vision should be something we're working for that we aren't now. And then the motto is like a quick, high-level overview of who we want to be as an organization or what we want to put out in the world that's easy to remember. So the three drafts, the fact that they're in these little chunks, that doesn't have to stay. The fact that there's, you know, they might not be worded correctly, the team can work on that. But I guess the idea behind crafting some language is just that this can get really tedious with a big team. So what I guess I would ask is, what's resonating with you that you like in any of these? And what is something that, so for example, Carrie said last time, do you mind me calling you out?
No, I was going to.
So Carrie doesn't love the word dream, so that's fine. That's good for us to know as a team, that that's not something that's feeling good. So are there other things like that where it's just not, it just doesn't feel like it belongs? Or are there things that you're like, absolutely this should be in there?
Well, I do wanna make one thing that we spoke about, that I do feel like mission and vision is something that we, as a board, have to also deal with on a...
We have to own it, right?
Yeah, we have to own it. And so if we're not able to get behind it, it's gonna be difficult. So for the people that are gonna maybe be at the next strategic planning from the board, maybe explain to the groups like what it, how it affects us by what it says. I don't necessarily know what that would sound like, but, and I can't go, so I apologize. But I do think they need to understand from a board perspective, like how it drives us in our meetings, and then, because I think it's a little different than how it drives like a parent or a staff member.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, ultimately, we would love for it to be embedded everywhere, that everyone knows it and calls upon it and thinks about it. But yes, this is the board's statement, right? And these, all these were put in the survey, so we do have some preliminary feedback. We will have a lot of feedback. Currently, I have 217 responses so far. It's going out in teacher newsletters this week. It's, students are starting to take it. Teachers will take it at faculty meetings tomorrow, and staff, it's going in the Village Newsletter on Friday, so I'm keeping it open for an extra day or two, just in case any... We have five community members that are from my non-parent list that have already filled out. Two current high school students that are graduates of 65. So we're getting people to weigh in. And there are those two open-ended questions that you can, you know, talk about what's working and what's not working. So for these, is there anything that you really want us to take back to the team, myself and the two people that are gonna come?
The one thing I like, I like moving our current vision, excellence education, disease of life, every student, every day, keeping that as a motto. I think that, I, I'm just using feedback from the Community Wellness Task Force meeting that I know some of us were at, and the word excellence, I know can be a debatable word to use, given that it can, it can cause, you know, from a psychologist's perspective, it can cause stress and anxiety, you don't know that excellence is the only, you know, alternative.
I can tell you that's in the feedback already on this.
Yeah, so other than that, I've always liked that motto. I've always liked that generally, but I, I, I like the vision. I'm not a big fan of a vision having the word "build", you know, because "build" is not really a vision. "Build" is more like what you do every day to try to get somewhere else. So I think we, I think the vision is more about just working to build. That's more of an action. I do like, you know, as I thought about these, I like this one that's, you know, we envision an inclusive community that empowers all students to foster their dreams, explore their interests, and create their futures. I like that as long as that motto, some version of that motto stays the same, because I think really that's what we ultimately want, right? So I don't know that I love the mission that was tied to that one, but I do like that vision statement on its own.
On the vision statement, and sorry if this has already come up. I really liked the personalized learning experience, because I think that's important. And the, where did I see? I like, I like the word, oh, right there, engaged also, because I think that word is strong for everyone being part of it.
And all three of the ones had inclusive, which is great. And all three of the ones that were at least proposed here. Clearly a word that came up and lost the tables.
I do like as well, like the idea of personalized learning experiences. Another one says ownership of the learning. There's a word that I always see that's in one of them, agency.
I don't like that word.
I struggle with that word for some reason, maybe because I'm too old and it's, it's, it wasn't used the way it is now 10 or 15 years ago, and so I don't know. I wonder if it's...
Can you say more about that? Because that did come up in the survey.
Like, I wonder if that word will be used in 10 years from now or 20 years from now. I understand how it's used. It doesn't flow for me in my conversations, although I, I think I am, I understand how it can be appropriate, but...
No, I think that's come up as not, and not, something that's not resonating with people, so...
Well, the way it's used here is redundant, agency and ownership.
Yes, yeah, that too.
I wish learning would be in our vision, not the last one or included in the last one, because I think that's kind of the end game, right? That's what we do.
And we do have the feedback of kindness somewhere in here, right, Mark?
Well, I mentioned it last time. I don't know if I saw it specifically. Maybe we just don't wanna be kind?
Well, there's another section, because there's core values. So there's another opportunity to add kindness, but is there anything else in mission and vision? I would say I'm not, there's, there's definitely a group of, in the community that feel comfortable with our current mission and vision, which is good to know. They can support it. I don't personally believe that our current vision is a vision in the sense of something that we are working actively to create. So I do like, if we're gonna keep that wording, to move it to a motto, because I think it's very easy to understand. It makes sense. It feels good to a lot of people. But like, vision-wise, I think we need something a little more specific.
I like our current vision as a motto.
Yeah, I agree with that one.
But in a great way, a lot, a majority of people that have filled out the survey so far feel like they could support our current mission and vision, which is good to know.
And I like Carrie's thought about, you know, we want a vision that, you know, talks about inclusivity, that talks about, I love creating their futures, that's ultimately, that's what agency essentially means, I think, right? But adding in learning, you know, somewhere, I think, does make a lot of, I mean, teaching or learning, or, you know, some, something like that, I think.
I like the word commit. I mean, there's something about that word that makes, it feels really strong to me. So I just wanted to put that out there. I like that idea of we're here to commit to all these things.
In a mission-type area, right, not so much in a mission?
Yeah, in the mission, yeah.
I feel like it would, you know, we speak of our mission and vision every time we talk about it a lot. I know a lot of people in the workforce have missions and visions, but, you know, for others, if we want it to be something that everybody gets behind, like very clear explanations of what it means and to who it means it to, you know? I do think like if the kids read that, they wouldn't know, but like the teachers would get it, and we would get it, but maybe some community, community members would say, "What's the difference?" or...
Yeah, building that out is going to be huge.
Can you say more? And I, I think Crystal did talk about this and I'm just not remembering. I understand how the tables assigned kind of the verbs, nouns, and adjectives around the mission and vision. But can you say more about how these three examples were articulated and formed?
So we looked at other vision and missions. We read some research around current trends in education.
The whole group?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we jigsot it. So each table had, I think, three resources, six, there were four articles and three websites. And we jigsot some of it and then some of it we all read. So, yeah. It was, it was sort of, remember in the portrait when we talked, like the landscape and looked at current things? And then talked about, we also looked at our current vision and mission. We also looked at the perception data and the things that we had strengths, and yeah.
So I guess the reason I ask these, with five tables but three ultimate examples of mission and vision, were there other ones that just weren't included here?
No, Crystal drafted these.
Okay.
Crystal drafted these based on our, yep.
Okay.
So she committed to trying to pull everything together to give us a start. And then the team hasn't even had a chance to look at them or try to wordsmith or change or what have you, so.
That makes sense.
These are just there to seed conversation earlier.
Yeah, right. I will say that, and this is really not a helpful comment, I will acknowledge that. I, I, none of these resonate as it to me, right? So I am happy to hear that this is just sort of a stop, jumping off point for the committee to start to wordsmith it. And I fully understand why you can't wordsmith it with a whole bunch of people, you know?
It's hard. I mean, as it is, there's a big commitment to this work and a lot of hours that's been spent. But I've sat in meetings where you try to wordsmith and it's can be painful.
Oh, yeah.
I think what I'm hearing, though, is that we like the current vision as the motto. We've gotten used to that. It makes sense. It incorporates some things we like. You like commit, I think we like commit. We like inclusivity, we like learning, we like some, not the word, but some ownership, agency, creativity over your own features.
Personalized learning, I'm hearing, yeah.
So at least we're getting some themes I think we're comfortable with.
Kindness is in there. Of course, we still have core values to get to, so it could be there too.
One of the things, one of the things I would, I would suggest too on the visions, go big or go home. These aren't big enough. I think, I think we can dream bigger. It's your vision. You know, you're looking five, ten years down the road. This is a community with amazing support and resources. We can, we can go, go better.
I think it's a really good thought, because, because if, if the definition of vision, which I understand that is something that you're ultimately not going to attain, you're going to always be working towards. We can attain an inclusive community that empowers all students to foster their dreams, explore, not the word dreams, but.
Oh, no, let's just, let's do it twice. We dream, we're not dreaming, I'm joking.
But I, I do agree where I think that what I'm seeing here is attainable, you know? What happens if you attain it? You know, so it's, I think you're right, Mark.
But you want to make it hard, yeah, but also big, bold, you know?
Because I don't think.
Notice I'm saying that on my last meeting.
Why are you lining with a high school and why aren't you? Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
Well, I don't think we're far away from having an inclusive community. I don't think we're far away from empowering all students. I don't think we're far away from, you know, having an education or a system that helps students to create their future. So I think incorporating that is great, but we do a lot of those things already because we have great staff and great administrators, so.
Is there anything that you're thinking of when you think of that unattainable?
See, for me, it was excellence. I didn't realize that was, had a negative connotation.
Kind of a new thing, yeah.
Yeah. Because like you never, no one's ever, or perfection or something like that. You just don't achieve it, so. But it, and you got to strive. For something, striving for perfection is kind of, oh, I gotta go.
I heard us, I heard some, yeah, some feedback on there about no trying language. We don't want to try. We want to do it.
I agree with that, totally, trying, building, that's.
Yeah, because we're committing.
Yeah, we're committed. So I just, I would encourage you to think about too, like, because we have, I mean, we're coming up next week, so it doesn't have to be today. But if there are things that you're like, well, that would be a stretch.
Well, I think that is a good, what is, what is that big thing? What is that big thing that's, you know, seems like something we could always be working towards? I don't know. Think about it.
One of the things I keep coming back to that I've heard about since my, before I was in the board and my kids were in, had IEPs and working with teachers and so many kids deserve, require, or really would thrive with a unique curriculum per kid, which is like virtually unachievable. But how do you do that? How do you teach to that?
That's your personalized.
But that's, right. That's, I think that's a huge piece that I don't think you're ever going to, especially in the public sector, where we have to teach to the bell curve probably, I suppose. But you can dream toward it perhaps.
I think that's been talked about a lot, and I think there's ways to build that. I mean, I would agree with you that personalized, truly personalized learning experiences are a thing that would be very hard to attain. At all times, for all kids. So that does feel like a reach. The other thing that feels like a reach, which, I mean, I think I would love to see is maybe a little different than the agency and ownership piece, but a partnership between parent, or between teachers and students to co-create that personalized learning experience.
I don't, I don't think we should be bound by what other districts and what the trends are either. It's like, what's right for our kids in our town and at our, you know, now and in five or ten years.
And I agree with the idea of setting out, you know, something that's really, you really have to, that you may never achieve, right? But also, I, I don't want to look at the vision and be like, oh, that's not doable. Like, what, you know?
But, but if you can, something that's out there that you're going to start laying groundwork and buil- building foundations and heading in that direction, but.
Something that's so motivating.
Yeah.
That is the end goal.
Needs that motivating piece.
Right, yeah.
You don't want it to be ridiculous.
Right.
Where people are going to laugh at it and say.
Well, and I'm hoping.
You want all the kids to be NASA astronauts.
I'm hoping we can sneak hopeful, optimistic, and joyful in here too somewhere. Because I think we're missing that piece sometimes.
And kind, I like that.
We got kind. Shall we move on to our core values? Like, I got it. I'm just kidding. Yes, kindness, absolutely. I think some of the, we can strive for that, to create an environment that's kind and hopeful and joyful and.
I like hopeful and joyful.
Yeah, I think it's how.
Well, and all those things support learning.
Yeah, but I think it's how you use those words, because putting hopeful in the beginning of the sentence is a little loosey-goosey.
You put it at the end, I hear you.
You're hoping that we can do that?
Right.
We hope to create.
Or creating a sense of hope.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, it's just.
Or optimism.
Hope is not a strategy, wasn't that a derogatory?
I feel like those words can go out there, but those are the words that like you walk away from. And now, those are the ones you remember. So if you put it in the wrong place, inflection on the syllable or whatever they call it. You know, it can just, it can change your mindset.
That's the only thing I was worried about with dream, but like, put it in there, I'll quit, I'm kidding.
Oh, my God. That wasn't kind.
I look forward to seeing what the feedback is.
No, this is great feedback, great feedback. Then the last piece is core values. Like, as an organization, what, what are the values that we build all of these things on?
I think we should add kind in there.
I think kindness might belong in here too, I think.
I'm laughing, but I am serious about it.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah.
I'd say table one had more bullet points than any of the other tables, for whatever that's worth.
Well, that table was gifted. I'm just kidding.
I know who was there, but they had a lot of ideas.
I don't remember. This table that was. I don't think it was mine.
I worry about excluding things and they're no longer a focus. Specifically, one that we had and we've had in the past that's been a big part of my board work is the whole fiscal responsibility thing. That it, that people lose that or forget about that, because that got us into trouble once upon a time.
I mean, that is, right? In a great way, you did a great job in your last plan to address that. And so there was nobody, I don't think, in any of the groups that felt uncomfortable with our position financially and with facilities. Yeah, it's strength.
It looks like it's in three or four of these core values too, right?
So I think we can bring that to the table as a core value as well, being responsible stewards of the community's resources.
Well, that's a core value, I agree, yeah.
So the core value ideas here in the bottom right box are these?
Those are sort of the draft set.
Based off?
Based off of everything that.
Yeah.
And it not, just because something's on the chart doesn't necessarily mean it was a trend, but there are some things on here that are on more than one chart that we can certainly move over. Anything else that you feel like we need to move over?
I love the resilience. I always go towards the resilience.
I love accountability, but it didn't get moved over.
Accountability, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we are moving towards a generation that can own it.
I think some of this also depends on where it's settled for mission and vision too, because the core values have to speak to that. So if, if a core vision we have is creativity, where someone's creating their own future, then a core value should be that too, so they, I think.
The other piece is she, she was very clear, she doesn't want us to be redundant. So if something is in there one place, we don't want it in there four places. We want to use those spots to kind of build off each other and scaffold.
Sure, okay.
Is this comparable to in the last one where we have like belief statements? Is that kind of?
Yes, this is the guiding principles, which we were, we had a lot of verbiage around those. There was a lot in there, which we can build out again.
Are our core values, this is kind of a funny question, but I do mean it. Are our core values things that we want, you know, like we have our pause and what do we have at the middle school, Nate?
Bluff her.
Bluff her traits. You know, are all of those our?
I mean, part of what we'll have to do is like, where, where does this fit in? Because all of it should be embedded into everything we do. So if that's the place, like it gets transferred into bluffer traits and pause, like, that might be a place where we say we want to embed some of those pieces.
I'm also, this is personally, I'm a big believer in having a lot of core values. You don't need to be set on five or six. I mean, lead has thirty-seven core values, so I mean, we just add to them as you, and we do look at those, like, and that's just one example, but I, but it, I mean, I think there's a lot of great things on the list, but pairing it down to five or six, I don't think is necessary. So that just, a little bit of feedback there in terms of, as long as there are things that we are going to use in decision-making and supporting students and supporting staff and supporting our system, I think they should all be on the list. But if there are things that are on the list, just to be on a list, then they probably shouldn't. But I think having a wide list of those is okay. That's my own.
Yeah, there's, I don't know if I want, I think we need thirty-seven, but I do agree that there's a lot on here that I could see. Being on the.
So feeling like a more inclusive, like a, a larger list could encompass more of the feedback, yeah.
You know, like, kind of along the same lines as my comment about financial responsibility or whatever the exact wording was, fiscal discipline, the transparency point. I only see that in one of them, I think. But that was one that, when we worked really hard to make that part of everything the board and administration did over the past number of years, and so.
I think it's a big part of the success too, yeah. I agree. And I think that's a danger, right? And being successful at something, which I think is a great point when we talk about strengths. Like, part of Crystal's whole thing about strengths is, just because it's a strength, doesn't mean you don't want it somewhere in the plan, because you don't want to lose it.
Right.
Right? So I totally agree with that. I agree.
I feel collaboration is something important at, in the schools, within the community, everything, everyone working together.
I agree.
There is some, that made me think of partnership too, that's, that's always.
There's in there too, it's in there too.
Table five, I see it.
Mark, should kindness be a core value?
I'm glad you're getting it as much as me.
Let's dream about kindness.
I don't know why I'm so cold-hearted.
I, I mean, I think that's good direction for the team, that we could be more inclusive. And I, I mean, believe me, the process is coming from the process that has worked in other places. But if we feel like we want more of those core values, we can do whatever we want with this plan.
I've never seen any research on pairing down core values, providing, creating better outcomes, you know? I get wanting to keep it simple, but.
I think some of it is around that idea of like, when you prioritize everything, then less becomes prioritized. I think that's where it's coming from, but.
I'd be curious, yeah, I'd be curious on Crystal's depth, because my understanding of core values are that they're not the highest, I mean, they're, they're.
They're the foundation.
They're the foundation of things you use to, yeah.
I would agree. They're not your goals. You're not setting your goals around that. You're, that's the foundation of everything you do. Yeah, I would agree.
But this has been, I mean, for me, this has been a great opportunity for us to connect and talk and.
I agree, thank you.
So I appreciate that.
No, this is super helpful.
I mean, it's, seeing all the amount, the amount of work that's been put into this and all the people that, you know, volunteered to do it is amazing.
Well, like we said, I think this was a great opportunity for us. And I would love for two members or potentially four, or, I mean, we could do up to six, as long as you're not more than, groups of more than two. But if you want to be involved in that retreat on the seventeenth, let me know. We could do two shifts of two, so like, somebody could come, two people could come twelve to three, or one person go twelve to seven, and then two more people can go morning and afternoon shifts. I would love for you guys to see the group and see the process and be there for kind of this last piece of what do, how do we want to like, create this final future preferred, preferred future statements? So just let me know, we're ordering lunch, dinner. Panera is the choice, and we're going all out, right, Jay? It's Panera time. Because the kids have chosen, so Amy did a great job ordering, yes. Pizza the first time, the kids chose Knop Knop Grill the last time, which we were amazed by, the whole team, it was awesome. And then they were like, okay, now it's Panera time, our last time. So if you let us know, we will send you an order for dinner to the Gorton Center. And then we, the team, will have one more meeting after that, because when we draft that final draft, that will then go out as a final thing for community feedback. And then the team will meet again to review that final feedback, create the final piece that we're bringing to the board, and then that will be the last.
Will we have another one of these?
Yeah, after our third retreat, to go over what the final product was, that, that'll be at the special board meeting. And then that one, we'll just create it, we'll pare down that process piece, give lots of opportunity for comment. I don't think you'll need a whole lot of process piece on that one. And we can lengthen the meeting too, so that we can make sure that we have enough time for everything.
Can I just ask the board here, I mean, does anybody feel strongly about being there the whole time from twelve to seven or splitting up in shifts from maybe twelve to three and then three to seven?
Is it pretty cohesive? Like, if we do split up, are they playing catch-up in the afternoon for the second shift?
I don't know what the, I don't know where we'll be at.
Agenda is, yeah.
So I think any table, I mean, you guys correct me, if any table would be happy to have anybody come and join and just like join in wherever we are on the conversation. What I would love, yeah, what I would love is whoever's there at the beginning, that you would be willing to be with me and kind of present some of what was done tonight. I'm also probably going to ask the committee to review this tape before the next retreat, so they can hear it from you instead of us.
Good idea.
Go to the tapes.
I'm so sorry.
So that, so that people can know, like here, just directly what the conversation was. Because that's helpful. I think it will be, I mean, everyone wants the best product, and I can't say it enough, this team is committed. They have done a lot of hard work. They've been really reflective. They've been drumming up business and getting people to do surveys. Like, we have a two, a super committed group and we're going to come out with a good product, so.
That's awesome.
I'm so appreciative to that group for the time they spent, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be great. So just let me know, is there anybody that is committed to the seven hours?
I'm going to try to move some stuff around.
Okay. Now that you heard about the Panera.
I can, I would be very committed until like three-thirty and then I don't know what I can do after that.
I could do twelve to three, and then, because I have to leave town.
But it's the seventeenth?
Is that a Monday?
It's a Monday.
I can do, I think I can do any.
I wonder if it actually might be better to, I mean, you would know it's the process, but to have two in the twelve to three or three-thirty and then twelve.
We could go twelve to two, two to four, four to six. I mean, we could do that, if you want to do that.
Is dinner being brought in?
Yeah, dinner is at four. So if you're there in the four clock shift, you get dinner. Otherwise, there's snacks and beverages, and that is like.
What kind of snack?
Not many people, not many people eat the Funyuns, so if you're there from four to six.
I'm in.
I cannot.
Yeah, not even the kids.
I cannot guarantee that there will not be only Funyuns left.
You gotta do a nap.
Nobody's eating them.
So if we do split in those, I'm happy to do twelve to two.
I can do twelve to two also.
I can do.
Anybody in for like the two to four shift?
I could do later.
You would do later, Tim can do later.
I could do later, later, if you need me to.
So Carrie and Tim maybe the last. Lauren, maybe the two to four or two to five shift? You want to do five to seven?
Or four to seven, whatever it was.
Yeah.
All right, we'll figure it out. We're going to, Amy got it. She got all that feedback.
Awesome, okay.
Thank you, Amy. We're going to go to the tapes tomorrow.
I think that's great, because there, then more of us get an opportunity to kind of see the, but is that going to be overwhelming for the team to have different people coming in and out?
What do you guys think? I don't, it's a pretty easygoing group, right?
It's not getting there.
It's not.
Yeah, okay.
There's no doubt.
It's upstairs, right?
Jay have, Jay has us in the smallest room. We're fiscally responsible. We're fiscally responsible, we don't need a fireplace, we're just using everybody.
Just stretch out.
No, I will be able to make room, I think we have a couple of members that can't make it already on the seventeenth, so you'll be taking some people's places, so we'll make it work.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for giving us the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, this is great, thanks so much.
Is that it for?
What is it for my part, what is in, I'm sorry, I logged out.
You're next.
Oh, staffing update, oh, thank you, okay. So as you know, we have already brought you a staffing plan, which you have already approved for next year. And as you also know, when we were presenting that plan to you, there were some reductions that we were making based on um positions that we had added during COVID. And we said we would continue to monitor and talk to staff and look at caseloads, because we really we needed that staffing plan for budgeting and things, but we've continued to research and have conversations. Tracy's also been looking into different models for how we support our students, um with social workers and psych support, because two of our positions were those SEL positions that we reduced. Um, and we're here tonight because we're asking for an additional, we're gonna ask for bringing back one of those positions, but in a different way. And so I'm gonna ask Tracy to give the background on that and then we'll have discussion. Um, but this is not for approval until uh until the next meeting.
All right, so um as Lisa stated, there, the administrative team is proposing to add an additional position to the twenty-three, twenty-four staffing plan currently titled Student Support Services uh or Student Student Support Specialist. Um, in the development of this position, we really wanted to be thoughtful about the positions that we previously had. So Lisa had talked about those two temporary SEL positions that we've had for the past couple of years. Um, those really focused on SEL curriculum development um and morphed over time to also include some direct student support. And we knew those positions would be temporary, and so we had eliminated those two positions for the current staffing plan. Um, when we developed um the staffing plan for the coming year, I had reviewed caseloads for our social workers and school psychologists for students who have IEP minutes um and for five oh four plans that include some access to social worker time. Um, but we also have students who receive social work as part of our multi-tiered systems of support. Um, we know that students who receive those supports through our multi-tiered systems of support um are an extra caseload on top of the students who have IEPs and five oh four plans. And our current staffing plan accounts for those students. We also know um that we're seeing in our own schools and nationally higher than average numbers of students requiring more acute therapeutic um supports. And providing these supports often takes time and resources in order to directly work with these students, families and outside organizations to provide students with the level of support that they need. This is taking the time, not only of our school psychologists and social workers, but also our administrators as well. Um, our principals and assistant principals are often working side by side with our um SEL team in order to ensure that we're providing a safe um inclusive environment um for our students. So some examples of things that we're seeing in our schools that require a higher level of supports are reports of suspected abuse of students, students who are victims of gun violence, students returning from temporary full-time or partial hospitalization, and students experience, experiencing anxiety and school refusal. This is just a small snapshot of the types of challenges that students are facing and our staff members are intervening with. Given this information, I began to look at a model for support that would meet these needs. Um, in conversation with the Director of Student Services from the Glencoe School District, I learned of a position that they have in their district to support students who have experienced trauma or are in crisis. This is the model that I used for this new position. Two weeks ago, I brought this idea to Dr. Lielli. Um, and when um Nate, Dr. Lielli and I attended the Wellness Task Force this past week, it highlighted that we have not yet seen the full effects of the pandemic. It was reported by a psychologist in the meeting that the greatest effects would be seen in years three and four post-pandemic, which is what we are coming into in the next two years. Our district has always had a philosophy of inclusion and making every effort to provide students the supports they need within our schools. And our administrative team believes this position is needed in order to support some of our highest need students. Those who do not yet have an IEP or a five oh four plan, but may, maybe in crisis. So for more information regarding the job description, the staff member will do things such as facilitating classrooms schoolwide and emergency crisis interventions as needed. Maintain channels of communication with administrators, staff members, parents and professionals outside of the school to create a sound experience for children. They will work as part of the threat assessment team and may be the person who is administering those threat assessments during a crisis. In collaboration with um our administration, they'll enhance resources and support for teachers in the form of um more professional development on trauma-informed practices. Um, they'll serve as a liaison between the school district and community resources such as DCFS or other local um agencies. And they'll perform attendance, intruency, data collection, communication and intervention implementation for students who are um refusing to come to school or having um attendancy, intruency um challenges. Um, so this was just a snapshot of the role of this is support specialist that we are recommending for the addition of the, to the staffing plan. Do you have any questions for me?
This is a full-time?
This would be a full-time position that would work in both buildings. We anticipate the staff member would be housed at the middle school, but would travel between buildings and we would develop a communication system um to make sure that that staff member could be accessed with, regardless of what building they're in, and also have times that if they're not currently within a crisis situation, that they're spending time within both buildings to get to know students, staff, families, um in building relationships prior to have, to interacting with a particular student on a crisis situation.
You said this is modeled after Glencoe?
Mm hmm, yes.
K to A?
Yes.
K to A?
Yes, they're, they're a similar district, I believe they have one or two more schools than we have, I think they have three elementary schools and a middle school. Um, so they're a little bit of a larger district. Um, their staffing looks a little bit different than ours does in terms of psychologists and social work support. Um, but this is a traveling position within their district as well.
What certifications are we requiring of this person?
So we are um posting for a social worker or school psychologist background with at least two years of school experience. We feel like having experience, um understanding the way the public schools work, um getting to know families and practicing in these situations would be important for this role, to have a bit of experience in their background.
I'm not sure how to word it, but who is this, where this person comes on board full-time? Who are they relieving other duties? Who are they unburdening and maybe freeing up a little bit of flexibility or time?
That's a good question. So I would say our social workers and our administrators, probably the most. Nate's ready to speak on this. He got up for that question. Um, so what I would say is, we have, our staff have daily schedules, weekly schedules of students generally with IEPs, five oh four plans and who we know need those tiered supports, kind of in the schedule. We also have students we know that have crises or feeling anxious or need to leave the classroom at certain times of day. Our school psychologists and social workers will still have to work with students for some of these things. Some, some discussions take just a few minutes to help a student problem solve and get back to class. But some can take hours in order to help a student work through whatever is happening with them. Um, so I would say in those times, not only is it usually a social worker or school psychologist, it could be both, and we could be adding administrator support into that. So I don't know if you have anything you would like to add to that Nate? Okay. So um I would say all of those roles. Um, we know that we need our principals and assistant principals to be instructional leaders within the buildings. We of course want them to be so, so supporting when a student is in crisis, but we also need them to be in classrooms, working with teachers um and doing the other jobs that they have within the building. And we also know that we need our social workers and school psychologists to be meeting those required minutes of individualized education plans and um those five oh four supports as well. So we want to ensure that um we're meeting all of those needs.
I think something else we've talked about, if you don't mind me chiming in, is um the idea of what happens after dealing with a crisis with the adults in the situation. Um, secondary trauma is a tough thing, as Tracy talks about. Um, when you take crisis, after crisis, after crisis, you take in that information, you talk to the parents, you're dealing with community um partners, it becomes difficult to just kind of like shut that off and go see other students, you know? A lot of our adults have needed extra time to deescalate themselves and process through what they've just heard or what they've just talked about or had to do with a student. And that again, when we say hours, it isn't just direct support for the student and the family, sometimes it's us supporting then that adult educator to get themselves back to the point where they can go to the students that are not in crisis and be that regulated, see, stable support for them that we need them to be. Um, and that's just the reality of those kinds of manifestations. The struggles that we're seeing right now.
And I, I'll add to that, that I learned after the shooting in Highland Park this summer, when we were working with a a specialized trauma therapist with some of our students, that you know, in hearing some of the stories, social workers and psychologists have been trained in protective factors and how to hear about what's happening um when a student has experienced trauma and how to detach themselves from that, protect themselves from that secondary trauma. Um, that's something teachers haven't learned, it's something administrators haven't learned. Um, and so it's important to have properly trained staff to be able to um work with students, hear their stories and help them cope.
Can I say something too?
Mm hmm.
Um, I was gonna say to Mark's point, what, like who's, who are we taking the load off of?
Mm hmm.
Um, and it would be easy to say, you know, if we have anxious kids or kids that are struggling, that that might not be a school thing, but the reality is, it's such a school thing. And the numbers of increase of kids in situations that aren't even traumas, but just anxiety, depression and, and just getting through life have increased unbelievably.
Mm hmm.
So I think we're probably being pretty modest with asking for just one, would be my guess.
Mm hmm.
Um, especially because you know you have to, by law, make sure you've covered all the IEPs and all the five oh fours um and any other requirements before you can even help all the other kids. Um, and one last thing, the numbers of kids coming in from outside services that are missing school has doubled um since the pandemic. And like the high school has an entire department that is handling those kids. And it was actually on my list for the end of the year to bring up that I feel like we were a little behind in being able to address that. So just my two cents.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a couple of things within that, yes, we are seeing, like I said, some students coming out of partial hospitalizations or full-time hospitalizations that we need to support as they're transitioning um back into our school setting, and that would be an important part of this role. Because sometimes they haven't received any IEP or special education supports in the past. It, there is no um indicator that a student has to have a diagnosed disability in order to have an acute you know, situation that we're working through um and need the, need the support for that. So I, I agree that those are some things that, that we're working on um with this position and want to be able to provide.
I should say, I love it, I, I appreciate the way you framed it, I think that was really well done. Um, and you know, as someone who's my career is working with schools with students who are in crisis and um the, the number of crisis calls our team gets is exponentially increased and increases seemingly every week. And I think the, um, I can, I can list, won't, but I can list out for you the schools that handle it really, really well and the schools that don't. And the schools that don't are typically those that are under-resourced, that, that have people other than social workers and psychs handling those crises in the moment and aren't trained to do so. So I think um the, the fact that you're do, you know, suggesting this and there's a model for it, but we're on the innovative front end of it. So you know, while some high schools are doing it, it is unique for, for elementary districts, I think um it's gonna, I, I think it's even hard to measure the, the impact of it, so just and, and just goes to the admin team, because you had promised that as, as needs arise, that we would amend this, the plan accordingly, and the fact that we're already here doing that is testament to your commitment to do that. So um just, yeah, that's all I want to say, but thanks for thinking about that, framing it up for us and giving us the opportunity to discuss it.
Thank you. Do you have another question, Mark?
I'm sorry, I got, I got a few more.
Mm hmm.
These are the, kind of the mandatory ones, I feel like I have to ask.
Mm hmm.
Can you talk a little bit about um the salary range that we're expecting for this position?
Mm hmm.
Maybe this is a Jay question, but how does it fit in the budget? Do we have to amend our budget as a result? Does it all work that way? Did we consider a going with a working through True North? Cause I know they place people perhaps of those same qualifications, I don't know about that job. Was that a consideration? And then had we, have we considered uh, is this, I guess, cause the, the question I'm about to ask is, is this really, does our district merit a full-time person? Have we considered sharing a person like this with another district? Did that, was that discussed? And if so, if you could just elaborate on that stuff.
Yep. Jade, do you want to start with the budget questions, or I can start with the others?
Okay.
This person would have a high level of education, so they probably would be MA thirty, you know, towards the right side of the schedule.
It's on the schedule, this position.
This, yeah, would be on, on the teacher's schedule. Um, and, and then, and then at least two years in school, so you know, MA thirty-three on down.
Which is roughly, I don't have the schedule in my head. And I know people want to hear it, so.
Sixty, I think, starting, you know, up to probably, probably eighty or ninety.
Yep, a range, I would expect a range.
Um, budget-wise, we haven't done the budget yet for next year, so this would be, you know, we would be working this in
Okay.
Into that.
So this person is, we're hiring for twenty-three, four?
Correct. Um, but you know, we are always looking, there's always some flex in the budget, and so we're, we are continually looking at our staffing levels always and adjusting, so I'm not concerned about fitting it into the budget.
Good.
Right, so first the question about True North and staffing through True North. So um one of the positives from staffing through True North is we have found some excellent people through True North. So um we, we contract a few different services, either part-time or full-time, and everyone we've worked with has been excellent. Um, one of the, I think, drawbacks of contracting through True North is the way they contract full-time positions, which is what we, we are proposing here. You can only contract for a full-time position for three years. At that point, you need to decide if you're hiring that person on um as your own staff or if we are no longer going to contract with them and then they would either have to find a place for them with True North or they would be released at, at that point in time. Um, we've just found that just for some logistical things, that's been a little bit challenging for us, especially if they don't have the same person for us every year. So when we contract, we get a position, but we don't get a, a specific person. Now, we've been lucky with the contract that we've had over the past couple of years with them, we did get the same person and that person was kind of hired for us, but that's not necessarily always the case. So for example, for a lot of our part-time positions, um or for some of our part-time positions, we've had a different person work with us every year. So um True North really gets the choice of who, when you're contracting. So that I think would be a drawback for this particular position. This position, to me, I think um it would be really important that someone becomes more embedded in our community, gets to know our community, our students, our teachers and our families and many of our local resources in order to be able to, to help students right when a crisis is happening um and, and really learn tho, those pieces. So we did consider the True North, the hiring through True North. Um, and then what was the other question, you had another question about?
Perhaps, is this really a full-time position?
Yes.
Should we share, should we consider sharing something?
So we also um talked about that a little bit. Um, we do believe that there is enough need and anticipated need in the next at least two years, if not looking forward um to be able to make this person very busy. Um, and really have a full-time um caseload of work for them to, to do throughout the day. We did look back at some of our previous sharing arrangements with some other local school districts and most of those sharing arrangements lasted one year and didn't really work out very well, and then we eliminated that sharing agreement with staff. And so while, you know, it, it could be something we look further into, we really do believe that this is a full-time position and we will utilize this staff member to the greatest extent, so.
I'm throwing softballs.
I'm just gonna say, I think it's a good idea. Based on this whole conversation and all of these answers, thank you for all the information, but I think it's a good idea.
Absolutely.
Once a good time is right.
Thank you.
So just in terms of process, is this something that we, comes in front of us in a meeting in May for approval, or is it?
No, this will come in our next meeting.
Oh, it'll be the next meeting, okay.
Unless, unless there's a reason to delay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tracy.
Nate, nothing you want to offer? If not, I'm gonna let him go home and get ready for school tomorrow.
Thanks, Nate.
Good night, Nate.
See ya. So next up is Jay talking about, or Jay and Lisa, contract renewal, non-certified compensation.
Yeah, so this is the time of year that we talk about support staff, anyone not on the teacher contract. So administrative support, administrators, single administrator contracts, anyone who's hired by the district that is not on that salary schedule and our proposed recommendation for increases for the next year. I'm gonna let Jay talk a little bit about his process, about in terms of looking for other districts and kind of getting more information on what the trends are. But the bottom line is, we are recommending a three percent increase for these staff members for next school year.
Yep. When, at this time of year, there's a lot of data sharing that goes on between districts and administrators. And so I think in, in your board packet is the range from just a number of sampling of districts in the area. The, the range is three to five percent. Based on the fact that the previous year, we readjusted almost all of these categories, either wholesale for market conditions or individually if they were not in the, within the right salary range for their position. So we felt that, given the big adjustments last year, that a, a three percent this year was the right number to go with. Also knowing that inflation may continue and if we have to look at higher increases in the future, that this is the year to go with the, at the lower end of the range.
Makes sense. Any questions, comments? Okay.
Just have a comment, if people are interested, looking at why we're doing this, you can definitely see the data in our board packet that shows a broad spectrum, sampling of districts in the area that show price increases in that range, so.
Thanks, Mark. Well, Jay, keep it with you for item E, the transportation.
I, tonight for approval after this is the, the, the contract renewal for Olson Transportation for next year. The next year's increase is five point six percent, so that is good news. You know, we, we typically, in a normal year, see increases in the five to seven percent range. We, I don't think we've seen five for a while now, just because in transportation, bus drivers have been particularly hard to find and keep. And they've been increasing their compensation for the past several years to try to attract and retain drivers. And then after last year's thirteen and a half percent increase, this seems downright wonderful. So, you know, we, we definitely have a long relationship. And I think they, you know, knew that they've been kind of pushing the envelope the last couple of years and came in with, with a price increase that is something that would be good for both of us. So we're recommending to stay with Olson and accept that contract for next year.
Is Olson still servicing, was it Green Oaks and Libertyville? There was like two of the districts.
They do Deerfield, Lake Forest, and they also do Roundup.
Roundup, that's, so they're pretty small.
Yeah, they're very small, it's just the four.
There really aren't a lot of other options.
Five districts, really, with the high school and the, yeah, they're not, I mean, this is a terrible bidding environment. No bus company wants to bid on new business because they are having hard enough time filling their current route. So, you know, Olson has been with us for a long time, they know our neighborhoods, they know our kids, and.
They've been good through us, they've been good to us through COVID. I mean, there have been many, many nightmare stories about not enough drivers and they've worked really hard to make sure we're stacked.
Yeah. There are school districts where parents, they were trying to figure out how to pay parents to drive kids because they just didn't have the buses and couldn't figure out what to do. And we've been a little bit short, but they've always, you know, filled the roads. The owners have been driving the buses if they've needed to, so.
Any other final comments? All right, keep it with you for HVAC.
Moving on, the, the middle school air handler proposal. I've been talking about doing these for a little bit now. In November, I brought a grant opportunity, which we did receive, it was fifty thousand dollars towards the project. I'm looking at using the same model that we are for the roofing because it's a single trade and a redesign retrofit, or basically a, a replacement of our current units. There's not a lot of engineering involved and it's more cost-effective and efficient to use a joint purchasing cooperative. I've found one that has worked with other school districts in the past and actually found two and got proposals from both of them. I'm recommending going with the one that came in a lot lower. They've got good references from other districts and have been working with our engineer at White to complete the design and make sure that they're meeting all of our needs. And that would be scheduled for the following summer, not this coming summer, but because of the lead times for our equipment, I want to get the contract approved now so they can order that equipment and have it ready for next summer. This also will, this will, is a, the current air handlers are at the end of their life and need to be replaced, but this is an opportunity to increase, improve air quality as well. We're going to be increasing the filtration of the air handlers and adding ultraviolet germicidal radiation for communicable diseases, flu, COVID is one, you know, any of those things. So I think it'll be, it's necessary, but it'll also be an improvement.
And this will be brought to us for approval on the twenty-fifth?
This would be brought, yeah, on the twenty-fifth for approval. I'm gonna have our, this is just their proposal, I'm gonna have our attorney put an addendum similar to the one they did for the roofer with insurance requirements and terms and things like that before it's approved.
Okay.
How old are our current air handlers?
I think going on thirty years old. And I actually did look at getting, just refurbishing them and not replacing them and had the engineers from White out to look at them. We were just gonna swap out the motors and they're just leaky and there was just, they're rusty anymore. They're, they're beyond saving, so it's time.
Thirty's, thirty's old.
And that's pretty much the last major item in the building that would need to be replaced. We've done everything else.
I know, for a while.
Unless something breaks. Everything is pretty new.
And that pricing is for twenty twenty-four, there's not gonna be like an escalation or anything?
In fact, that is, we had, if you, I had noted in the memo that I got pricing for this summer and it was actually a little bit lower. I think it was six hundred and thirty-something for this summer. And then we did actually learn about our control system. They had got some information from our train rep that wasn't accurate and they went back and had to increase the control price. But then also there was a twelve percent price difference between doing it this summer and doing it next summer. So things are increasing in price, but that includes the price increase.
Thank you.
And it's still cheaper than I was expecting. I had a million dollars budgeted for it, so.
Does our new buildings person get trained on all this stuff?
Our, our new buildings person actually worked a train and is an HVAC expert, so that's one of his strengths.
Yes, the Andy Garcia.
The Andy Garcia.
Yeah, it's been quite the career. Great, thank you, Jay.
Yep.
So we'll move on to our action items. First approval is for the Olson contract that Jay just presented. So may I have a motion to approve the Olson Transportation contract as presented by administration?
Second.
Any final discussion or questions? Okay, then Carrie, can we have a roll call, please?
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach, yes. Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes.
Anhil?
Yes.
Mark Barry?
Yes.
Great. Carrie's, uh, next one is the Lake Bluff Middle School West parking lot bid package approval. Any comments before I ask for a motion?
So I just, I put the, the bid results up on the board. And we were recommending going with Schroder Construction for eight hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Excellent.
Did we have a question about the lighting?
Yeah, is, this is all under budget to what you anticipated?
Yes, I, I actually before, I was expecting this question because I had the same question. So I went back to the architects and asked, you know, I was expecting closer to one point two million and I was looking at the eight forty-eight and thinking, maybe that's too low and there's scope missing or something's not right. And they basically said that, first of all, the number that they gave us was a kind of a preliminary number. They tried to, they don't want to be, they tried to get into the middle of the bids, they don't want to be too low and then have the bids come in higher. So they're, they're a target, they're a little bit conservative in targeting the middle. Said they were within ten percent of the high bid, so they felt okay with that. There was some like four percent escalation they had built in that they probably, that they said they probably should have taken out. And then there was some contingency that they had in there, so. You know, but they went through the bid results with the winning bidder and checked the scope and the materials and everything and feel very good about.
As their, their unit prices are higher, so.
Right.
But if everything's included, hopefully that won't be an issue.
Yeah, and in addition, there's a seventy-five thousand dollar contingency included. So if they do run into bad soil or something that is unexpected, that should cover that. So it could even come in a little bit lower.
Great. Does that mean they can afford the bigger room at Gorton?
Maybe.
Yeah, the, the elementary school came in higher and the middle school came in lower, but the middle school is the bigger.
That's good news.
Fireplace next year.
That's right.
Next strategic plan.
Next strategic plan.
So given that, then may I have a motion to approve the Lake Bluff Middle School West parking lot bid package contract as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any final discussion or questions?
What were the concerns about the lighting at the?
We have some neighbors who live on the south side of the parking lot and they're concerned that we are putting in lighting and they don't want to see it, so.
There's lighting there now.
There is lighting there now. We would be going from three light poles to six light poles. They'd be a little bit closer. And so they had raised some concerns about that. And not just the level of lighting, but like the fact that the hours, you know, should it be on twenty-four hours a day? Should it be turned off at night or dimmed at night, something like that? So we're following, we're working with the architects to follow all the codes. And they've got a, a former village trustee who is a lighting designer and architect, and he had made some recommendations that they're evaluating. And we feel we're trying to be good neighbors and work within those constraints.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have a motion in a second, so can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah, Carrie Steinbach, yes. Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes.
Anhil?
Yes.
Mark Barry?
Yes.
And Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
All right, that passes as well. Next one is approval of the personnel report. I'll read that, there's only two things. At this time, we have one FMLA request for Jennifer Prozam and ENL at the Lake Bluff Elementary Schools is effective March sixteenth to March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. We have one retirement that's four years out. It's for Jane Tuig at the seventh grade, social studies teacher at the middle school. And this will be effective last day of school, June twenty twenty-seven. And Lisa, would you mind just quickly stating why we see these four years in advance?
Yeah, our teachers put in their letters so that they can take advantage of their retirement benefits in the contract. And the earliest they can put in is four years prior to their retirement.
Great, answers that. So we have a motion to approve the personnel report for April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three that was just presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes.
Anhil?
Yes.
Mark Barry?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
And Carrie Steinbach, yes.
Passes as well. There's no consent agenda this month, given that this was originally a committee, the whole meeting. We'll have the next consent agenda on the twenty-fifth. Moving on to FOIA requests, also no FOIA requests this month, which is great. And then the next section will be public comments. There's nobody in the room, so any opportunities remotely? Okay. Then we will move to adjourn the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three Board of Education meeting at eight forty-eight PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.